We're just talking about what disruption really means and how new ideas can completely add new dimensions to teaching and learning and practice. So our next presentation is going to be another example of a new way of doing business. And so it's my pleasure to introduce Jim Dean, who will introduce our speaker.
Thank you Chancellor. So just two quick footnotes on the last presentation. One is the facilities issue is actually huge. It's a really big challenge for us. We have a set of buildings and infrastructure that are designed for the way that science used to be taught. And we are, under the leadership of Dr. Carol Trussellini, who's here, looking very hard at what changes need to be made. We are indeed changing classrooms as we speak, but this will be a multi-year effort that we're going to need some additional funding for, but we're taking this very seriously. The other thing I wanted to mention briefly is that in conjunction with our re-accreditation under Saks, we have identified our quality enhancement project as being accelerating this changing of STEM education and even beyond into the humanities as well. And so in some sense, you know, we've really run some experiments. What people have done has been terrific, and we're really taking this to a much even bigger level. So a lot of commitment around the university. So it's now my pleasure to introduce my friend and colleague Susan Cates. Susan is President of Executive Development at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, Kenan Flagler Business School, and also serves as Executive Director of the MBA at UNC program, which she's going to be talking about today. Prior to joining UNC, Susan was a partner with Best Associates, a private equity firm with investments primarily in the education sector based in Dallas. Susan was previously part of the founding team of Think Equity Partners, where she headed the education investment banking practice with responsibility for business development, client relationships, and deal execution. She was a principal of the Boutique Investment Bank in New York, which she co-founded with former colleagues from Merrill Lynch and Company. Previously, she worked in investment banking at Merrill Lynch in New York, as well as in corporate lending at Wachovia Bank in Atlanta. Susan is a North Carolina native from Person County. She earned her MBA from UNC Kenan Flagler, where she was a Julian Robertson Tiger Fellow and a Dean Scholar. And prior to the banking career and her MBA at UNC, she received her bachelor's degree from Duke University. I was very happy to be part of bringing Susan back to Chapel Hill and very happy to introduce her this morning.
Thanks. Thank you all, and thanks to Chancellor Folt and Provost Dean and the board for giving me the opportunity to come and share an update on what we're doing with MBA at UNC, along with my partner in crime in launching MBA at UNC now, Dean Doug Shackelford. We had an opportunity to speak to this board about three years ago when we were just beginning our journey with MBA at UNC. And at that point, it was, we were able to talk about what we planned to do, and which was a lot of, a lot of high hopes and expectations. But it's exciting to be able to come back to you all now, three years later, and give you a sense of what we are doing with this program, because it has, it has changed quite a lot. When we began considering doing an online MBA program in 2010, it was a bit of a radical idea for a top-tier business school to be thinking about taking a program online. And our premise at the beginning was that we wouldn't do this online if we couldn't deliver the same quality MBA education to students who were not able to come to Chapel Hill as we did to those who had. And over the years, from taking our full-time MBA to expanding our approach to reaching working professionals in the local area through an evening MBA, and expanding further to be able to bring folks in from around the region in a weekend format, to developing a global program, our One MBA program, which was quite radical in and of itself a little over 10 years ago when we launched that with four other universities on four continents. We wanted to continue that Carolina tradition of innovation and increasing access to high-quality education, but only if we could do it at the same level of quality that we do here in Chapel Hill. And we, we had reasonable questions about our ability to do that and to deliver the same experience for students who were, as John Radovan, our student on the left, is in the Air Force and stationed in Guam. And as he was being deployed to Korea, he was, he was doing his classwork on the plane. We wanted to be able to make sure that we were able to create an experience that was equal to what we deliver here in all ways as we did this. We had quite a bit of discussion among our faculty, our alumni, and our students as we considered this path in 2010, and engaged the faculty in weekly faculty meetings to get their input, engaged our Board of Visitors, our Alumni Council, and, and our students who felt quite strongly about understanding how we were going to approach this. And so as we launched this program and as we sort of took this leap of faith in 2010 in creating the program, we, we built it on three core promises to our faculty, to our alumni, and to our students. The first of those promises was that we would bring in the same caliber students in this program that we bring in in all of our top 20 rated MBA programs that we do here face-to-face in Chapel Hill and as well as around the world with One MBA, that we would make no compromises with respect to quality of students as we built this program. And we are, we're quite proud to have students in this program who represent great universities from around the U.S. and all around the world, and who are working professionals in organizations and companies that we want to be associated with, and that are really driving our economy in, in North Carolina, across the country, and around the world. A bit about the demographics of our students in this program. They fall a bit between our full-time MBA students and our executive MBA students. They bring more experience, they're a little further along in their career than students in our full-time program, who average about five years. In our executive MBA programs, that's closer to an average of 10. In MBA at UNC, our average student comes to us with a little over eight years of work experience, and they're in their early 30s. Their average salary and income as they're coming into the program is over $110,000, which points to why they don't want to quit their job and come back and spend two years as a full-time student. That's actually slightly higher than our exiting average income from our full-time program. So these students are, are further along in their career, but thinking about how they can use an MBA to expand their opportunities, to build on their career, to prepare them for not only their next role or their, or their next two roles, but prepare them to be senior executives leading organizations. We are drawing from, from all around the world for this program, although North Carolina remains our largest representation in the program. We have students in MBA at UNC who come from 47 states and 40 countries around the world at this stage. One of the things that has been, that has been something that we've been very proud of in this program is our ability to serve active-duty military and veterans who are looking to the MBA, the MBA path as a way to translate their operations experience, their extraordinary leadership experience that they have, that they have had across all of the branches of the military, and think about how to translate that into private sector as they come out of the military, or for that matter, continue to advance in the officer corps. So over a quarter of our students have some military experience in this program. One number that's not up here is that about 30% of the students who come into this program have a graduate degree in something else before they come to us. So we have quite a number of students with Masters in Engineering, JDs, MDs, a number of PhDs in hard sciences, who are thinking about how to translate that scientific and research, research experience into launching businesses or leading businesses and commercializing what they're doing as well. From the standpoint of diversity, we are, we are proud of the, of what we're achieving in terms of percentage of underrepresented minority in this program at about 18%. That is actually about double what we see in our full-time MBA program, which for our incoming first years this year is about 9%, and is, is better than we see across most top 20 programs. So that's something that's, that's, that we're proud of. One of the things that I'd like to see us do better at is our percentage of women in the program. We're 23% in this program, which sadly is not all that far off of where we are in our, in our full-time program, which is about 26%, and which is about, about the typical for top 20 programs. But when we launched this program, we had a hypothesis that offering a more flexible approach might allow women who self-select away from full-time programs for a variety of reasons to access an MBA. And we haven't seen that, we haven't seen that shift yet, but it's something we continue to focus on in this program. Our second core promise was that we would only do this program if we could engage our very best faculty. We, we said it was an all-volunteer army, although I'd say that Doug encouraged some volunteers pretty heavily along the way as well. And tremendous credit to Doug Shackelford for really engaging our top faculty. So we have area chairs, associate deans across the business school, our senior associate dean, teaching and designing courses in this program. So our very best research-oriented faculty have developed and created courses for this online program. And through, through Doug's leadership and through the support of Jennifer Cutts, our director of our global faculty network, have created a team teaching model that allows them to contend, to develop and engage in this program while still balancing their, their efforts in research and in teaching across our other programs. Our third core promise was that we would deliver the same sort of MBA education that students get when they come here to Chapel Hill for our traditional programs. And that took a lot of thinking around how we designed this program, because in a, in a top-tier MBA program, we believe that you need to learn through experience. The active learning that we just heard about from the STEM courses, we believe is critically important in thinking about how, how adults learn, how our students learn in terms of taking theories and frameworks and approaches, being able to practice them, to go through simulations, to work on projects together, to do presentations, to do negotiation exercises, and then to reflect on what they've learned and really put that back into practice. One of the benefits of bringing together this extraordinary group of students from companies like Goldman Sachs and Bank of America and Google and all the branches of the military is the ability to learn from each other and really engage with, with each other in the classroom. So we, we're very focused on how do we replicate that in an online environment, both through the virtual aspects and through the periodic face-to-face aspects in the program. We were, we were critically concerned with how do we help support our students in developing their career as well? No one, at any point in their career, invests in an MBA, both from an economic standpoint and from a time standpoint, because they're happy with where they are in their career. They're all doing this because they want to make some sort of shift in their career, in their companies, or to another company. And we had to think very carefully around how are we going to support these students in what is essentially a very individualized career development process for students who were literally spread out across 40 countries around the world, who were at different stages of their career. In a, in a picture coming up, there's a, there's a CFO of a publicly traded company, a young woman who's a double Carolina grad, was one of our BSBA's who works for a consumer packaged goods company, and another young woman who's an engineer for 3M. They're at very different stages in their career. How could we focus on their career development in a very individualized way at a large scale across the program? We hired Shaunis Metter, who is, was the head of talent development at Progress Energy, who was an engineer by background, who used her MBA education to move into a different career in talent management before she joined us, to really think about how do we build a, build an approach that can support our students in making career changes. We also really cared about their ability to develop friendships and strong networks in the MBA program. That's a core, a core piece of the value that students get from this experience, is the, the richness of the relationships that they make in the classroom and in the projects that they work on, the support that that gives them in terms of a sounding board for their career going forward, and also the sort of relationships that help them feel very tied to UNC were important as we built this program. We, we were also concerned with, in an online program where students may not step foot on campus in Chapel Hill, how could we create Tar Heels? How could we create Tar Heels without the benefit of the Carolina blue skies and the occasional beer on Franklin Street? And so we've been very mindful in the, in the design of the program around that. We created an orientation, a virtual orientation, where we talk about the history of the university, the history of the school. We have our faculty engaged in talking about what it means to be a Tar Heel, what it means to be part of this family. Once a year, we hold an immersion weekend here in Chapel Hill that an enormously large percentage of our students choose to come to. This past year, this is a picture of, of over 300 of our students here in Chapel Hill at the Carolina Davidson game, and luckily we won, which was an added bonus. But we, we have them tour campus. We had Provost Dean come and speak with them when they were here last year. So we, we take every opportunity to really try to help them feel part of the Carolina family throughout the program as well. And finally, we, we were critically concerned with how do we develop these students as leaders? Not just share content and frameworks and the, the sort of work that helps make them better business managers, but how do we help create leaders? Leadership is one of our core values at Kenan Flagler, and we've really devoted a lot of energy to building a leadership initiative in this program, where we spend time in our immersions, in our curriculum, bringing in leaders to do virtual speaking sessions to our students, and creating a customized leadership experience for students as they're going through, as they're going through the process. As I, as I mentioned earlier, when we, when we were looking at this in 2010, it felt like a pretty radical idea, which now seems sort of insane to say, because at this stage, we hear our peer institutions talking very aggressively about what are we doing in terms of an online strategy? We've seen one of our, another of our peer institutions among the top 20, Carnegie Mellon, enter the market with a fully online program, and many others that are talking about this quite openly. But at the time we launched this, it was, it was a bit of a leap of faith. Would they, if we build it, will they come as well? And our first cohort, we bring students in four times a year instead of once a year. In our first cohort, we had 19 students. They dubbed themselves the O-19, the Original 19, and we talk about them as our pioneers, because it's so much nicer than calling them our guinea pigs. But they, but they knew that everything they were doing in this program, that they were our partners, because they were experiencing every class for the first time, every professor that they dealt with, no matter how experienced they were in the classroom, was a rookie in this methodology. And so they were, they were enormous partners and advocates for us. But from that first cohort of 19, we ended our first year with 131 students. The number of students starting in this program has grown every year since, and we should hit about 1,000 enrolled students by the end of this, by the end of this fiscal year. As of next week, we'll be at about 850 cumulative enrolled students in the program. And we believe that we're really just, just scratching the surface of what the potential can be for this program. When we launched this, we did this in partnership with a technology company who helped us with the technology, the media production around the courses, as well as the marketing and how do we reach students. And when we did this, it was with a tiny little venture-backed company with a funny name called Tutor, that had exactly one program up and running with USC, their Masters of Arts in Teaching. And I kind of shudder to think about it now of what a leap of faith that was. We did quite a bit of diligence on them, met with them extensively, met with their, with their venture investors, Jim and Doug and another of our faculty members, Arv Malhotra, and I flew out to USC and spent several days talking to the folks out there. And then we kind of closed our eyes and jumped and, and hoped that we'd made a good decision around our partner, because they were going to be critical to us as well. They have been extremely successful, which has been enormously helpful to our success in this program. They've changed their name to Two U, and they've gone from that one program to now 17 programs with 12 different universities, including Northwestern, Wash U, Georgetown, and Tech de Montreux in Mexico. And went public earlier this year. The CEO of the company with the, with the pink scarf standing there ringing the bell at NASDAQ is one of our students in the program, and continued to show up for class all the way through the IPA Roadshow, which, which is quite a testament to his dedication in the program as well. They have actually, they have a tremendous commitment to education, and we have eight of their employees among the 800 and some students in the program, and they've hired three of our students into senior roles as well. So it is a nice symbiotic relationship on that front as well. So they, we chose Two U out of a sense of shared vision and really aligned goals around this, a commitment to the quality, an understanding of our brand and what we stood for and our focus on, on our students, and a, and a firm belief that we could do this without making compromises to quality in what we were offering. From the, from launch in 2010, as I mentioned, we, we have enrolled about 850 students as of the beginning of October, with an active student body now of about 615, which is slightly larger than our full-time MBA program, which is about 560 students. So in three years, we've, we have effectively almost doubled the size of our MBA program without building a classroom. We've graduated over 200 students. And one number that we didn't put up here, but that's, that we're very proud of is, we have 96% retention rate in this program to date. And that represents enormous dedication on the part of our students. These students are all working professionals, they are juggling work, and in many cases, very big jobs. CFOs and CEOs of publicly traded companies, heads of emergency medicine departments in the medical field, entrepreneurs, folks who are in leadership development programs in big companies, military folks who start the program in one country, get deployed elsewhere. We had one gentleman start the program on a naval aircraft carrier, another who does two weeks a month at an offshore oil rig. Our valedictorian of our second class came to one of her live sessions from the hospital in labor, which is one of my favorite stories from the whole program. It was long labor, she had an epidural, it was fine. But we would have given her an excused absence for that one. But the, the retention rate is a rate that we would be proud of in any program. In an online program, it is unheard of, and when you think of the, of the commitment that these students are, are making and the rigor of the program, it is, it is really something that's, that's quite extraordinary. I wanted to share a little bit about, about our students. Raheem Walker is one of our, our students out on the West Coast, and we'll share a very short video about Raheem's experience in the program. If you'd like to see more of, of, of his story about the student experience on our website, onlinemba.unc.edu, we have a whole set of videos about his experience as a student, including interviews with the CEO of his company, talking about the impact that he's seen while Raheem's been in, in the program.
One of the major advantages of MBA at UNC is the diversity of the student population. I've been in class with doctors, lawyers, folks who have PhDs in organic chemistry, others that are getting their second and third masters, and they work in such a broad array of industries. And I think it's been amazing to be able to network and to establish very strong relationships with folks in leadership positions in large organizations across the world. Networks within MBA at UNC are alive and well. It's the same as any other environment. Business today takes place primarily in an interactive online format. That's exactly how our program is delivered.
So I cannot give away straight secrets, guys, or else I would be definitely kicked off the island.
We all have an opportunity to interact, network, and to understand what unique qualities we can leverage in helping each other progress our careers into the future. We do so through immersions, online happy hours, we have a lot of group interaction. So I feel like I know my classmates just as well as I would know them if I were sitting next to them in a classroom.
Our next student that I wanted to highlight is Lindsay Chason, who's just a total rock star, who really could, could go anywhere and do anything she wanted to in this program, and, and chose this because of her passion for Carolina, her passion for Carolina culture. She's gotten multiple promotions at the Home Depot since she's been in the program, is a recent grad as well. A bit about the, the platform and the structure of the courses themselves. So our students do the academic components of this program in three ways. Asynchronous video that they do prior to coming class, very similar to what we just heard about in the, in the STEM courses at the undergraduate level. Live sessions that are done in very small classroom sessions, no more than 15 students, everyone's face is on the screen, and it's, it is a flipped classroom model, where the frameworks and the concepts that are done in sort of a lecture environment are done in the asynchronous materials prior to coming to class, and I'll, I'll flip forward and show you a bit of those. The platform itself is built in a way to be very, be very accessible to students and to be set up in a way that, that looks very much like what they're used to dealing with in, in social networking sites as well. Our asynchronous material that the students do prior to coming to class, we try to make, try to do things that you can't do in the classrooms effectively. So this video is part of our operations course, where Professor Wendell Gillen, throughout a 10-week course, applies operations concepts to a football Saturday at Kenan Memorial Stadium. So it helps make the, make the concepts very accessible to the students, and, and sort of under the surface, it's also helping the students who are not here feel more a part of the university community as well. This is an example from one of our organizational behavior courses, Leading in the Middle, which focuses on matrix management and, and influence across organizations. Dave Roberts, who's speaking right there, thanks to Austin Gardner for bringing him to Kenan Flagler, who heads up our sales curriculum. Dave Hoffman and Dave Roberts, through this, through this set of vignettes, are basically trying to help students identify power and influence, sources of power and influence, through watching interaction of folks in a meeting and understanding what they're doing. So students watch a very short vignette, a minute long or so, and then they're asked to engage and identify who's got the power here, who's got the influence, what, either from a formal standpoint or an informal standpoint, and to share their answers. So they're engaging in this in an asynchronous way before they come into the classroom to be able to then discuss it. So in talking to the faculty about this, they're able to do things-
You know, we all come to this-
Through the, through the video that they couldn't do in a classroom. This is an example from Lisa Jones Christensen's class around sustainability, where she took a film crew with her to Ethiopia to be able to share with students some of the, the concepts that she's explaining and exploring in, in the developing world as well. The live classes, as I mentioned, are done in a very small way. So again, like we heard from our colleagues in, in the STEM side, this drives a very high level of accountability. Students come, they're expected to have done all of the work before they come. We like to say there's no back row, everyone's face is on the screen, everyone's dialed in by voice. Up in the, in the upper-left corner, Professor Ashraf Jaffar is leading this discussion. Ashraf was part of our tenure track faculty here in accounting for many years, and left to go back to India for family reasons. She teaches for us every week, multiple sections from Mumbai, and, and is able to engage with the students who are coming from all over the world as well as part of this. So she's teaching an accounting class as part of this session. And this is the way we do case discussions. We're able to use breakout rooms and break people out to do negotiation exercises. We're able to use breakout rooms and break people out to do negotiation exercises, a whole range of things that we could do around the table we can do here. We're taking what we're learning from these methodologies and blending that back into our traditional residential programs as well. So Professor Mark Lang, who teaches financial accounting in the full-time MBA program, is using what he's created from an asynchronous standpoint for additional support for students in the traditional program. Paolo Fulgieri, who's our area chair for finance, is restructuring the way he teaches his corporate finance class in our one MBA program, using what he built through MBA at UNC. We're also rethinking how we are doing executive education for companies and beginning to work with large companies and deliver virtual executive education to managers who are spread all over the world using this platform and these methodologies. So it's really helping us rethink the way we teach across the school. The third component of the program is around immersions. I could spend more time than any of y'all have talking about immersions, so I'll touch on them very briefly. But we do these for a three-day session at the end of every calendar quarter around the world, two non-U.S. locations, two U.S. locations every year. Students are required to come to two over the course of the program, and most of them come to four or more. At our last immersion, we had one who had been to eight. We only give them credit for four, they just keep paying and coming to them because they love them so much. But this year, we've been in Johannesburg, New York, Mumbai, and we'll be back in Chapel Hill in December. At these immersions, we bring together our very best faculty. We bring in faculty from local universities as well. We tap into fantastic speakers so that students can learn from the experiences of leaders in the corporate and in the government world as well. At our recent immersion in New York, we had Gary Parr and Sally Krawcheck, Carolina grads, and thanks to Peter Grauer, we had Justin Smith, president of media at Bloomberg, for our students in the media track. So we really try to bring in great speakers and leaders who our students can learn from as part of these immersions. In terms of outcomes, the student community has been quite extraordinary. 98% of students feel like, say, they agree or strongly agree that they're accomplishing their professional goals throughout this program, and a very high percentage for an online program, 70% say, "I feel like a member of the university community," agree and strongly agree. Our students have taken it on themselves to create over 100 social groups that meet and do work together throughout the platform. We've had over 300 promotions over the three years among our students. And among our graduates so far, 71% of them have received a promotion or made a job change while in the program. And the final point here is around the connection to the university. Among our first 100 graduates, they have given well over $100,000 in class gifts as they leave the university. Our very first group of students, that O-19, they made a class gift of $25,000 at their graduation. In contrast, our much larger full-time MBA program, and in their defense, they're not working and earning a paycheck while they're here. But 280 students the year prior had given about $23,000. Our most recent graduation was 60 students. They had committed almost $90,000 by the time their graduation date rolled around in honor of one of their students who passed away in the very first term, who none of them ever met in person. He was serving in Afghanistan, he was a major in the Army who died of acute leukemia, and the students felt so tied to him even though they had only known him through the virtual sessions, that they rallied to try to raise $100,000 and create a scholarship in his name. They took the initiative to fly his widow in for the graduation. The intensity that these students feel about each other and about the university is something that we're quite proud of as well. Our faculty voted, before we launched this, five to one in favor of moving forward on it, but it was still quite a leap of faith for them. And we wanted to share a very brief video of one of our faculty talking about what they're seeing in terms of the learning outcomes in the students as well.
And what we've observed is that the performance is comparable, except in the online program, we lose sort of the stragglers. We lose some of the people at the bottom end, which is good, right? Those are people that I think in the full-time program, they get sort of, they fall through the cracks, and they're not falling through the cracks in the online program.
So our faculty satisfaction, our student satisfaction, and our experience to date with this program has given us the confidence to move forward in launching another online program from the business school that we'll be launching next summer, taking our Masters of Accounting program and launching that in an online version that we'll be calling Accounting at UNC, that'll start next summer. So if you have kids or friends who are thinking about getting their accounting degrees, send them our way. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have time for one question.
Thanks so much. One question I have, the online resources seem incredible. Do the residential students in the traditional MBA program have access to those as well?
It depends on the faculty member and how they want to use the materials in their core class. We make them available, that's part of our contract with TU. It's part of our expectation is that they'll be able to use those in the traditional classes as well, and it's really up to the individual professors to choose how they want to use those.
It's so exciting for us to see it. I didn't see your first presentation three years ago, but you know, I've been hearing and hearing about this program, and I heard about it even before I came here. So I mean, it is really exciting, and maybe what seems most impressive to me is the building of community and seeing the students say that. You know, they're living in this virtual world, so maybe that even makes sense, but really, we really appreciate it. Again, this is another example of disruption that is actually leading the way, so we're really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan.
(applause)